Do you want the I said?
I'd like to ask everyone, please silence their electronics. I call this May thirteenth workshop meeting of the Borough Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Rosinski?
Present.
Councilwoman Plouche?
Present.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Present.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Present.
Councilwoman Yatsko?
Present.
Councilwoman Yornell?
Present.
Mister Mayor, there are six present.
Will the clerk please read the meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding of this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of the resolution and the posting, filling, and forwarding of a copy of the same to the official Borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Star Ledger Publishing Companies on January tenth, two thousand nineteen. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of the scheduled matters has been completed.
On the agenda tonight, we have a presentation on vaping, Juul, and e-cigarettes. Would Miss Melissa Demchka please come to the podium to give the presentation?
Thank you, everyone, for having me. I have to say, I'm really happy to see so many of your faces with you guys. So my name is Melissa Demchka. I work for an agency called The Walgreens Center for Mentions. We're Middlesex County Community Education Agency, providing education, awareness, and advocacy all over the county, including the South.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go over some information about vaping, Juuling, and e-cigarettes. But to start, I like to go over substance use disorder in general. So one in five of us know or love somebody with a substance use disorder. The average age of first use in New Jersey is nine. So when you think about it, that's about a third grader. Youth who have one parent with a substance use disorder have a fifty percent chance of also having a substance use disorder. If a youth has two parents, that comes up to ninety percent. And youth who start using before the age of fifteen are up to seven times more likely to become dependent themselves. That's because the brain isn't done developing at about the age of twenty-five. And we always like to say nearly sixty percent of people with a substance use disorder also have some sort of co-occurring mental illness. So what are we seeing right here in Middlesex County? This comes from our twenty sixteen Pride survey data. And for past thirty-day use, nine percent of high school students reported e-cigarette use in the past month. That's about one in eleven, so classroom size about two or three students. Perception of risk, thirty-two point nine percent of middle school, which is about one in three, and forty point five percent of high school students reported little to no risk in using an e-cigarette. So what are they? They were introduced into the marketplace in two thousand three, starting in China. They came to the U.S. about two thousand six, two thousand seven. They didn't really get popular until about two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen. They're battery-powered, so the nicotine is administered as a vapor that looks like smoke. The difference is with traditional tobacco smoke, it lingers in the air, you can smell it, you can see it. With the vapor smoke that's released from an e-cigarette, it's an aerosol, so it dissipates very, very quickly. The aerosol particles are also much smaller, so what we're seeing is that they can get deeper into the lungs. They used to be called electronic nicotine delivery systems, or ENS. The name has since been changed to electronic inhalant devices. That's only because other substances such as marijuana can now be put into these devices. I'll also get into the flavor options. So how does it work? The illiquid is put into this cartridge that's then heated by a battery, and then the battery heats the liquid, and it's essentially released as that aerosol. So what we know, there's out-of-control marketing. We know for tobacco products, they're not allowed to advertise on billboards within certain distance of a school, no longer allowed to advertise on TV or radio. That's not the case for e-cigarettes, so Juul ads are now being on the radio, Juul ads are also on TV. There's no control over how they're being marketed. They're expanding nicotine use. Instead of people quitting, or instead of individuals quitting, they're now simply turning to another nicotine product. There's more progression to establish smoking among youth. So what we're seeing, if a youth or anyone uses an e-cigarette, they become dependent on that nicotine, and then it doesn't matter where the nicotine is coming from, whether it's the e-cigarette, a Juul, or a traditional cigarette. Less quitting in adults. E-cigarettes are not an FDA-approved way to quit because there's no downgrade of the dosage. And also the FDA regulation. The FDA, the Food and Drug Administration, was supposed to begin regulating in two thousand eighteen, it's now been pushed back to two thousand twenty-two. So what that means is they're not testing anything that's in these products. So a question I get a lot when I do presentations is it just water and flavoring. I've highlighted the four that I'm really gonna talk about. The first is formaldehyde. We know formaldehyde is a cancer-causing agent. If it gets anywhere on an individual's body or through their skin, it's incredibly toxic. Lead as well, it's a heavy metal. Again, if it gets anywhere in or on the body, it can be incredibly toxic in certain dosages. Dichedil, I'm gonna hold off for a second, I'll talk about in the next slide. But then there's also nicotine. Because they're not FDA-regulated, even if an illiquid or a product is labeled as nicotine-free, there's still been found to be traces of nicotine in them. So a lung disease that's been linked back to vaping is called popcorn lung. Dichedil was a chemical, a flavoring agent, that used to be used in microwave popcorn. It was taken out of microwave popcorn because people who worked in those factories were developing something they nicknamed popcorn lung. It's an irreversible lung disease similar to COPD or emphysema. So I liken this to lung cancer. Someone who starts smoking cigarettes today is not going to get lung cancer tomorrow, a week from now, maybe five years from now. They will get lung cancer maybe ten, twenty, thirty years from now. We're seeing the same thing with e-cigarettes. Because they're so new, and they only got popular in the last ten years or so, we're just now seeing cases of popcorn lung starting to develop. So someone who uses an e-cigarette or vape today is not going to develop popcorn lung five years from now, maybe they'll develop it ten, twenty years from now, so it's the same concept. So what does the marketing look like? How are these companies marketing their products? They're marketing it in ways that look like candy. So there's a juice box, there's cotton candy, there's sour worms, there's M&amp;M's. It makes it appear harmless, and it makes it appear as if there's no harm in using them. So these, this is what our students, this is what our youth are seeing day in and day out. It doesn't look like it can cause anybody any harm, it doesn't have the labels that a tobacco product, a pack of cigarettes might have. It looks like candy. So right off the bat, it looks like they can't cause any kind of harm. Something interesting that we found is that if you ask a student, if you ask a youth if they are vaping, they will say no. But if you ask them if they're Juuling, they will say yes regardless of the type of product they are using. That's the terminology that they're now using. So one pod. A Juul is sold in about four pods, they're called. One of those pods has the nicotine equivalent of a pack of cigarettes. They resemble a USB, so they're very techie, they look pretty cool, and they're easy to hide. They have, again, that very high nicotine content. It takes about a hundred cigarettes to become addicted to nicotine. The equivalent of that in Juul pods, Juul pods. A different one I like to speak about is this one down here called the Flare. So because Juul has gotten in trouble with the FDA for their marketing, they pulled back a lot of their flavors in stores. Now what we're seeing are people turning to something called the Flare, which is very similar. I did some research, a Flare holds twenty milligrams of nicotine per milliliter. The second one down here is called the Sworn Drop. So again, that refillable cartridge holds two milliliters, and you can put in an illiquid of your choice. They're very small, they're easy to hide. If I was holding the Sworn Drop in my hand right now, you probably wouldn't be able to see I was holding it. This is again, some of the marketing. Juul has promised up and down that they are not marketing to young people, but every time I do this presentation, I say the models they are using look younger than me. Again, why quit, switch to Blue? That poster says, "Nobody likes a quitter, make the switch today." So it's the same kind of marketing. Blue is a type of e-cigarette brand that's using the same kind of marketing that tobacco products, tobacco companies used fifty years ago. So your doctor recommending vaping over using cigarettes. This is interesting. So the maker of Marlboro cigarettes, Ultra, invested thirteen billion dollars in Juul. Juul is now worth about thirty-nine billion dollars and owns up to eighty percent of the e-cigarette industry in the U.S. So big tobacco companies have realized that people aren't smoking cigarettes anymore, they're losing money in their products. They are now investing large amounts of money in these e-cigarette companies. So common reasons youth have reported that they use. Because a friend or a family uses them, that was the highest percentage at thirty-nine percent. The availability of the flavors, again, the Sour Dream, the M&amp;M flavor, the apple juice. And just the belief that they're less harmful than other forms of tobacco. So the impact of social media. When big tobacco companies were marketing their products, social media wasn't a big thing. We didn't have Snapchat and Instagram like today that our youth are inundated with day in and day out. It's very easy to go online and find any of these videos performing vape tricks at vape summits. I always say that the people performing in these vape summits are not trying to quit smoking. And I also have people think how much aerosol, how much of that nicotine they're inhaling to actually be able to perform these tricks. So again, this is the other form of the marketing. Not only is it candy flavored, not only does it look like it's harmless, but this is the other form of social media that big tobacco companies didn't have to deal with fifty years ago. There's also different kind of products, so hats, shirts, sweaters, different products that sites like Vapewear can market and sell online. I took a screenshot of this off of my computer. You have to be twenty-one years of age to purchase any kind of tobacco product in New Jersey, so e-cigarettes as well. I went on this website, I hit enter, and there was no, nothing checking my ID any further. So anybody can get on these sites as long as they put that warning on it. But there's nothing actually checking to make sure an individual is twenty-one. So signs and symptoms that youth in your life might be vaping. Unfamiliar pens, USBs, or chargers, an unexplained sweet scent, increased thirst, nose bleeds, and smokers cough because these products cause drying of the nasal passages. Again, unfamiliar batteries, chargers, and this vape apparel. So Cloud Chaser is a vape brand. And this sweater, the strings are regular strings, they're actually the tube through which the smoke can be inhaled. So there is a product, the e-cigarette device tucks into one pocket and wraps around through the string. So again, what to look for? Maybe if they're sleepy, a change in friends, grades dropping, behavior change, they might not care about their appearance, they might be acting a sneaky, or maybe smelling like alcohol and smoke. I always get that this might be behavior in a regular adolescent, they might be a little moody one day. I always say that you know your youth, you know your child, you know your student. If something is off, you will notice it, and that might be caused to have a conversation. Maybe they just had a bad day, or maybe it's something to talk about. I just wanna end with something initiative that the state now has. So the state of New Jersey was provided funding from the Department of Health to create youth tobacco action groups. They're youth coalitions where students can create awareness and education campaigns for their peers. So Middlesex County, I'm proud to say, has about fifty students that are involved in this statewide initiative. This is just some vision boards that they made for their goals within the group. And that is it, so thank you so much.
Next on the agenda are items for discussion. Tonight we will hear from the engineer, Mister Julian Counterman.
The following projects are presently underway or are being considered in the Borough of Milltown. The Department of Public Works complex and the firehouse have been under construction by McCollough Construction Company Incorporated. The project generally consists of the construction of a new Department of Public Works facility, firehouse, and associated site improvements. The contractor has made progress with the site work, including completing the bulk of the stormwater, sanitary sewage, and water distribution system improvements, as well as the underground detention base. The construction of the public works and firehouse buildings is underway. The Wilson Avenue improvements is in phase two and has been designed and awarded to JADS Construction. The project generally consists of the milling, resurfacing of Wilson Avenue from Howard Street to the terminus, the installation of storm sewer system improvements on Wilson Avenue and Janet Court, and other related work. Construction of the project is underway. The water tank rehabilitation. The rehabilitation of the Borough's seven-hundred-fifty-thousand-gallon elevated water storage tank is presently being performed by the Allied Painting Incorporated. The project generally includes the recoding of the interior and exterior of the Borough's existing steel seven-hundred-fifty-thousand-gallon elevated water storage tank, required maintenance, rehabilitation of tank access facilities, and abplanances. The interior and exterior of the tank have been sandblasted and primed, and the intermediate and final coatings have been installed. The project is anticipated to be completed by Memorial Day.
Next, we have audience comment. I'll open the floor to the public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker is finished. It should be further noted that public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question-and-answer session. If a member of the public has questions they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office during regular business hours with a member of council during their allotted office meeting hours. This portion of public comment is limited to those items on the workshop agenda. Please state your name and address for the record when you come up to the microphone. Seeing none, I will close public comment. The scheduled matters have been addressed. What is the council's pleasure?
I motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. We will take a ten-minute recess and then return for the public to speak. I call this May thirteenth, business meeting of the Borough Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Rosinski?
Present.
Councilwoman Plouche?
Present.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Present.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Present.
Councilwoman Yatsko?
Present.
Councilwoman Yornell?
Present.
Mister Mayor, there are six present.
Will the clerk please read the meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding of this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of the resolution and the posting, filling, and forwarding of a copy of the same to the official Borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Star Ledger Publishing Companies on January tenth, two thousand nineteen. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence and salute to flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, withvered, infinite, and eternal.
Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. The following ordinances have been published according to law, and copies have been made available to the public prior to this meeting. Will the clerk please reach ordinance nineteen through fourteen seventy-three by title only?
An ordinance to amend Chapter fourteen, Parks and Recreation, Section six, Borough Pool Subsection six point three, Fees, and Section seven, Recreation Programs Subsection seven point two, Fees of Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey.
I will now open the public hearing for ordinance nineteen through fourteen seventy-three. If anyone in the audience has anything they wish to say about this ordinance, please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Council, what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that ordinance nineteen through one thousand four hundred seventy-three be adopted on second and final reading and be published according to law.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dwyer and a second by Councilwoman Yornell. Is there any discussion by council? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Rosinski?
Aye.
Councilwoman Plouche?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yatsko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yornell?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Next, we have the public hearing on ordinance nineteen through fourteen seventy-four. Will the clerk please read ordinance nineteen to seventy-four by title only?
An ordinance fixing salaries and wages for various employees of the Borough of Milltown and providing for the manner of payment thereof.
I will now open the public hearing for ordinance nineteen through fourteen seventy-four. If anyone in the audience has anything they wish to say about this ordinance, please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Council, what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that ordinance number nineteen to fourteen seventy-four be adopted on second and final reading and be published according to law.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Plouche and a second by Councilwoman Yatsko. Is there any discussion by council? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Rosinski?
Aye.
Councilwoman Plouche?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yatsko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yornell?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience on resolutions or bills and claims. If any member of the public wishes to speak on the resolutions listed or the bill list, please step forward and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions and bills and claims. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Next on the agenda, we have bills and claims. Will the clerk please read the resolution nineteen through one thirty by title?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of five million, five hundred, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars and seven cents.
I make a motion to approve this resolution.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Yornell and a second by Councilwoman Rosinski. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Rosinski?
Aye.
Councilwoman Plouche?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yatsko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yornell?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Next on the agenda, we have reports of standing committees and introduction of resolutions. A consent agenda has been prepared to cover the resolutions listed on the agenda. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please state the resolution number for consideration. There being no requests, clerk, please read the consent agenda resolution.
Whereas pursuit to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Milltown, of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
I make a motion to approve this resolution. I second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Sullivan and a second by Councilwoman Plouche. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Rosinski?
Aye.
Councilwoman Plouche?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yatsko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yornell?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. So move. We have reports from each department. We will begin with a report from Finance Administration and Planning by Council President Cynthia Rosinski.
Thank you, Mayor. The Department of Code Enforcement issued a total of nineteen notices of violations specifically pertaining to property maintenance code issues at residential properties. Criminal charges have been filed against the owners of the Ford Avenue Industrial Site with a scheduled court date of June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Municipal court summices have also been issued to the owners of the Ryder's Crossing Shopping Center for violations cited on that property, including site grading and sinkholes, trash, et cetera. An additional five notices of violation were issued to various business owners for violations of municipal, municipal regulations. As a reminder, spring has arrived and lawn areas must be cut throughout the growing season and yards maintained free from rubbish, trash, and garbage. The Office of Emergency Management is in the process of once again updating our municipal emergency operation plan and submitting it for approval of the county and state. Preparations are already underway for the Fourth of July townwide celebrations. We are also pleased to announce that the Office of Emergency Management has taken delivery of two vehicles from the US GSA at no cost to the borough. One vehicle will be utilized by the Department of Public Works for snow removal and other assigned tasks. The other vehicle will be utilized by OEM for transporting of equipment during emergency situations. The Finance Committee has met with the Business Administrator, CFO, Auditor, and Department Heads to address the needs of the borough in this year's budget. The budget is intended to be presented to council for introduction on May twentieth and would have the public hearing at a subsequent meeting. Once introduced at a meet, meeting, the budget will be placed on the borough's website and will be available to review at the borough clerk's office by the public. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Rosinski. Next, will you hear the report of Department of Public Safety chaired by Councilwoman Lani Dwyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Between March fifth, two thousand nineteen and April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, please have received and answered two thousand seven hundred and seven calls for service, conducted a total of eight hundred ninety-nine motor vehicle stops, which included special traffic enforcement and drunk driver details. One hundred and forty-nine radar details were conducted in various locations during this period. Milltown Police participated in the two thousand nineteen distracted driver campaign from April first through April twenty-first. During this enforcement period, approximately forty drivers were issued summons for being on the cell phone. Police responded to twenty-six motor vehicle accidents and made twenty-three arrests, which include shoplifting, drugs, DWI, domestic violence assaults, theft, and warrant arrests. The Police Department has purchased a covered traffic data collection device using drunk driver enforcement grant funds. This device has been placed in various locations and is being used to collect speed data for education and enforcement purposes. The Milltown Police Department continues to maintain all required training and continues to maintain the high accreditation standards of best police practices. There's been a lot of inaccurate information regarding police matters posted on different social media sites. Reminder that any important or emergent notifications from Milltown Police will be broadcasted at the chief's discretion via Nixel or the official Milltown website, which are the Milltown Public Police Department's only official media outlets. Residents are encouraged to call the Milltown Police Department directly for questions, concerns, or clarifications. With the warm weather comes more pedestrians. Please drive safely. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dwyer. Next, we will hear the report from the Department of Utilities chaired by Councilwoman Emily Yatsko.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of April, the Utility Department had the following work: Fifty-two daily station checks, thirty substation checks, and one hundred-plus utility markouts. Disinfectant residual testing was performed on April third, tenth, and twenty-fourth. All testing was found to be within acceptable parameters. Lead and copper sampling was performed the week of four twenty-two, and the results are not back from the lab yet. Electrical utility: Various electric meters were replaced. Several house drops and hooks were replaced and repaired. Twenty-seven streetlights were repaired, and we have been aggressively patrolling at night to compile a full list of broken fixtures. Streetlights deemed unrepairable have been replaced with energy-efficient LED lights. Ongoing maintenance of the overhead wiring has resumed and several deficiencies repaired. A Verizon pole was replaced on Garrettson Circle, and the Utility Department performed a pole transfer of the wiring and services. Water Department: Numerous broken water meters were replaced throughout the borough. Curb stops were located for various customers. The water tower painting project is underway, and the Utility Department has been assisting in the planning and preparations required by the contractors. The tank has been drained to facilitate the necessary surface preparation and the new coating to the interior to comply with DEP inspections requirements and ensure longevity. Residents can note the new color scheme which matches the borough's theme. The Utility Department assisted the contractor for the new public works building and firehouse to tie in the new water service to the property. Sewer Department: The one hundred HP pump at Church Street Pumping Station is still in the process of being repaired. Upon disassembly, additional parts were acquired and are on order with the manufacturer. Utilities personnel responded to a blocked sewer on Hague Street and operated our jetter to free up the blockage metering. As always, the Utility Department works hand-in-hand with the Utility Building, Billing Department to ensure accurate utility charges. We troubleshoot faulty meters and work very hard to resolve any billing issues that occur. Line clearance performed at Carina Drive, JFK Drive, Oaks Avenue, and Nelson Drive. The Utility Staff has been extremely busy providing quality water, reliable electricity, working streetlights, and functional fire hydrants. As always, it is a pleasure to serve all of our residents, and we strive to provide prompt service around the clock. A reminder to all residents: If you have a water, sewer, or electric emergency, you can call Milltown Police Dispatch at seven three two eight two eight two one zero zero, extension zero, for service at any time. For non-emergency situations like reporting a street light out or a leaking fire hydrant, you can call the Utility Office at seven three two eight two eight two one zero zero, extension one thirty-seven. Or you can now report non-emergency problems on the borough website. If you have questions about water or electric service or your water or electric bill, please call seven three two eight two eight two one zero zero, extension one eighty-three. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yatsko. Next, we will hear the report from the Department of Public Works chaired by Councilwoman Amanda Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with all regular curbside collections, the DPW has the following report: Approximately seventy trees have been removed from the pre-existing shade tree list, and more, and more will be removed in the coming weeks. The soccer field has been painted for the recreation soccer league. Curbside grass collection has begun. Please remember, all grass must be in cans weighing less than fifty pounds and placed at the curb for all your regular, for all regular garbage day. Brush and garden waste must also be out in cans weighing less than fifty pounds. Street repair has taken place on First Street. Public Works Department has begun prepping the pool for opening in June. Potpourri repair is ongoing. The sweeper has been out as manpower allows. Reminder to all residents: Non-metal book is the third Wednesday of each month. This applies to furniture, a rug, et cetera. Your item must be placed at the curb the night before a collection begins. We cannot collect the contents of a house where this you must get a dumpster. Metal is the first Wednesday of each month. This applies to an appliance, a lawnmower, grill, et cetera. Please put item out no sooner than the night before a collection begins. Electronics, TVs, are our second Wednesday of each month. This applies to computers, printers, TVs, et cetera. Please put items out no sooner than the night before a collection begins. No appointments are needed for these collections, so please help keep our town clean by following the schedule. Pickups may take a few days since the whole town is covered. Recycling must be put out in cans. Please do use bags, including clear, as it will not be collected. Concrete collection will take place the second week of July. Please plan your projects around this for easy collection and call seven three two eight two eight two one zero zero, extension one eighty-seven, to get on the list. The Clean Communities Coordinator would like to thank Josh Makor of Makor's Barbershop for organizing a very successful cleanup that took place on May fifth. Josh and his fifteen volunteers were able to gather over thirty bags of debris and recycling and numerous other bulky items from Mill Pond Park and surrounding areas. Despite the tor, despite the torrential downpours, these volunteers made a huge success. Please check channel fifteen in milltownnj.org for DP, for DPW updates. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sullivan. Next, we will hear the report from the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services chaired by Councilwoman Lani Dwyer.
Thank you, Mayor. The Milltown Environmental Commission, along with the Lawrenceburg Watershed Partnership, will meet at seven thirty PM on May fifteenth at the Milltown Senior Center. Deanna Miller, Assistant District Recycling Coordinator for the Middlesex County Division of Solid Waste Management, will speak about the importance of how and why homeowners and communities should be composting their solid waste. As a reminder, it was discovered that Edgeberrill Landfill receives four point four pounds of solid waste for every Middlesex County resident every day. As responsible residents, we must do what is necessary to reduce the amount of trash that goes to Edgeberrill Landfill. The Milltown Board of Health will hold its annual Free Rabies Clinic on Tuesday, May twenty-first, at Borough Hall from six PM to eight PM. This is a free clinic for Middlesex County residents only, so if you choose to attend, please bring a photo ID. Please also remember that animal licenses for cats and dogs are required and must be renewed every year. Licenses can be procured at the borough clerk's office, and rabies vaccines must be valid through at least October thirty-first of the current year in order to be licensed. Mayor, that concludes the Environmental Health and Social Services report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Plouchea. Next, we'll hear the report from the Department of Recreation chaired by Councilwoman Stephanie Yornell.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with the daily operations of deposits, registrations, billing, et cetera, the Recreation and SAC departments has the following. SAC reminders: Summer SAC registration is ongoing. Please note that the deadline for registration is May twenty-fourth. There is a late fee if registering after this date. Packages are available at the Recreation Department and on Borough Website. The SAC program is hiring for adult SAC aides and SAC managers for both age groups for summer and school year SAC. As a reminder, due to HVAC construction at Parkview School this summer, the Milltown SAC program will be held at Joyce Kilmer. The two sites will be separated within the building and will operate independently of each other. We are in search of applicants for adult SAC aides and SAC managers for both age groups for both summer and school year SAC. SAC children will be bused daily to the Borough Pool from the JK SAC site. Recreation information: We should complete interviews for summer positions this week. All layers for rehires and new hires will be all applicants in late May. If you are a returning employee, you will not be called for an interview but will still receive an employment letter. Albert Avenue Summer Recreation Registration forms will be available after May twentieth. As a courtesy, we will email the registration forms to previous participants. Email blasted through schools if have it available on the website. If you are interested in child yoga classes for ages eight to twelve years old, you're still to sign up. Please contact Recreation Department at seven three two eight two eight two one zero zero, extension one forty-one. Pool membership sales will begin May twentieth through May twenty-fourth, one to four PM and six to eight PM at Borough Pool. We will post the badge sale dates and pricing on the website. The Recreation Committee meeting will be on Wednesday, May fifteenth, tw, two thousand nineteen, at seven PM. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yornell. Next, we'll hear the, hear the report from the Business Administrator Gerald Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor. The following is a report from the Special Projects Coordinator regarding the Public Works and Firehouse Project on fifty, Washington Avenue. In call construction, the original contract is ten million seven hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. The change orders is seven hundred and seventy thousand and nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The payment order is seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-three cents. Paid to date by, uh, four, four million, two hundred and four thousand, five hundred and eighty, uh, dollars and seventy-one cents. Balance due with change order is seven million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven, uh, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety cents. Uh, Sanabruno Architects, paid to date, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and five dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the two monthly inspections is eight thousand, two hundred and five, two hundred and fifty dollars. CME Associates paid to date by three, uh, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-four cents. The monthly inspections is forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, met with general contractor a total of six times regarding continuing site work, progress of buildings, constructions, and issues relating to the starting terms of subcontractors. Met with engineering's representative regarding erosion issues in the area of retaining wall and duct bank along driveway entrance to project adjacent to Doctor's property. Physical building work is continued framing of fire, firehouse, footings, permacolon, and complete for DPW building and sweeping shed. Electrical and plumbing rough conducts being installed as well. Footing has been poured and wall forms constructed for final phase of retaining walls along property driveway entrance. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Business Administrator Reeves. Next, we hear the report from Municipal Attorney Charlie Johnson.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, this legal update will address the general topic of easement projects currently pending involving the Borough of Milltown. Tonight, I want to provide you with an update as to three separate easement-related matters that are currently underway in the borough. As a preliminary primer, an easement is the right to use the real property owned by someone else for a specific purpose. An easement is a real property interest, but legal title to the underlying land is retained by the original owner for all other purposes. With that in mind, here's the status report on three easement projects in the borough. First, as to the easement which the borough has sought across Washington Avenue from Borough Hall. Last year, we made a formal request to the property owner at seventy-two Washington Avenue, the Doctor's Office, to obtain an easement allowing us to use a small portion of the property while we are constructing the new Borough Fire Department Building and the works, and public work facility immediately adjacent to the Doctor's Office property. I'm glad to report that after the council approved all the documents, we finally have obtained the property owner's written approval on the agreement to provide us with an easement and, and also finalizing our permanent purchase of another small area of that Doctor's Office property, which will now not only allow us construction vehicles to access our property during the construction progress, but will also allow sufficient width for a driveway to be installed to allow our fire trucks and public works and utility trucks to be able to safely enter and exit Washington Avenue from the new fire department and s, public works facility. We have sent the signed easement agreement to the deed to the county clerk to record these documents. The second easement update pertains to strip of land along Wilson Avenue. We are still, we are still negotiating with the property owner to agree to provide us with a permanent easement so that we can install a nu, a large draining pipe underground that will help alleviate water and flooding issues in that section of town. Our engineers, governing body, and myself continue to negotiate that easement. Until the easement is, agreement is in place, we cannot undertake that part of the project. I will keep you all posted for any further updates on this easement. The third and final easement that I would like to report this evening is actually an existing easement that the County of Middlesex previously obtained on a certain property located on South Book Drive in the borough. This is property that the borough obtained in a tax default many years ago. The county would now like to purchase this property outright from the borough rather than just have the neasement so that the county engineering department can build a new culvert on this property. The county engineer has determined that the old culvert on the property should be replaced. A culvert is a pipe, steel, or concrete structure that is made to allow water to flow under a road or railroad or other structure so that the water can flow from one side to the other. Culverts are built to enable proper drainage or transport of water. The problem we have encountered in trying to sell this property to Middlesex County is that back in the nineteen sixties, seventies, when the borough acquired this property, apparently the proper documents were never filed with the county. Therefore, I am now trying to get the Superior Court in Middlesex County to recognize the borough's original title documents. We are trying to accomplish this now so that the county can purchase the property from us and then go ahead with installation of a new culvert. I will contin, continue to keep you posted as we work to solve this legal problem. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Attorney Johnson. As for the mayor's report, I would like to say that Mayor Steber was able to attend the first responders and Veterans Appreciation Night at the East Front of Alks. Mayor Steber is honored to present proclamations to our own local heroes, Michael Dennis, Matthew Capella, Skip Davidson, and Eric Waschenheim. All these men have graciously served their country. I want to again say thank you to these brave men for their dedication and service. Our reports are concluded, and I would like to open the floor to council to address any old business. Are there any matters any, any member of council would like to address? Seeing none, I will close old business. I would like to open the floor to council to address any new business. Are there any matters any member of council would like to address? Seeing none, I will close new business. Next, we have audience comment. I will open the floor to the public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow Public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker is finished. It should be further noted that public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. If a member of public has a question they seek answers to, an appointment can be made at the appropriate office during regular business hours with a member of council during their allotted office meeting hours. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the microphone.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Russ Einbinder, two twenty B South Main Street, and I was gonna say councilmen, but I see that except for our mayor, we have an entire set of ladies up here, which is, might be something about the future you might wanna notice, folks. So, alright, um, I'm here on behalf of the Milltown Fourth of July Committee, or actually we're the Fourth of July Organization Inc. now, 'cause we're a five oh one C corporation, which is good for financial reasons, which means we can do more, which is why I'm here to promote it. Um, you kids have all been there? You always hear me talk about it. Councilman Ray Valinsky, Councilman Farkas, both members in the past, the present and future, Mr. Zambrana back there, we have a lot of people in town. I expect any of you, if you stay living in Milltown, will be on it someday yourself in this committee. It's the most fun, most significant day in town for a lot of reasons. And one of the things we need to do is raise money for it, and that's why I'm talking about our upcoming wine tasting that's coming up June first. It's at the Legion. If you didn't see it in the stories yet, or on Facebook, or anything else, tell your parents. Parents behind me, I'm telling you again, if you didn't see it. Um, you can get tickets about four locations around town, or from any council, I'm sorry, any committee member. Also, there's some other big events going on in town, but before we get to those, I want to tell you one more thing about the Fourth of July, and I think you're gonna like this. We got a new fireworks company, number one, which is a good thing, right? Alright, uh, we don't want last year's fiasco to ever happen again, and one of the things we've done, besides vetting them and making sure that they're gonna show up, is that when we start their fireworks this year, it's an electronic show. It's not some little guy going and just doing one by one. And, you know, what we're gonna have is not a raffle, but for anybody that buys a mug, a wristband, a tee-shirt, anybody, you have an opportunity, put your name in the hat, with a, uh, your address, the phone number, whatever, and that day, we're gonna pick out a winner, and that person's gonna in front of everybody in the town, push the button to start the fireworks. So that'd be a cool thing. Every year, we're gonna have somebody be the cool person that starts the fireworks button. So that's just the first year we're gonna do that, and I think it's gonna become a fun tradition, and we might get a little goofy with it, too, to put it mildly. I want to remind people, since I put a lot of things on TV fifteen that people don't see, I now have the Channel fifteen, notori- entire bulletin board, if anybody ever wants to know what's going on in town. If you go to Facebook, you'll see I put a link there as well, but the Milltown Borough website has a page dedicated to everything that's on Channel fifteen, all the announcements that I, as soon as I get them, I put them up, you'll see it there. Gabriella, make sure it's there. Let's make sure we, everybody uses that, 'cause I see people on social media always asking, "Why can't we know this is happening?" Well, it's there. If I'm told what's going on by the council or by the departments, it's on TV. If it's on TV, that means it's on the website. All you have to do is just go to that one page with the entire presentation there. So please, utilize that. Make sure you tell, "You guys understand it." Tell the people a little bit older than you how to use it, too, please, okay? Help us out there. And last but not least, uh, Council President, this Saturday is Ariel Hopkins Day, correct? What time does that start, sir? Twelve or one?
Twelve.
Twelve? Thank you. I was hope to see you all there as well. Okay, yeah, I know, it goes for a while. I hope to see you all there, too, to know the awesome cause. There's so many other great things going on, but thank you for your time. Great job, Kelly.
Seeing no more, seeing no more comments, I will close new.
Do you have a president over here?
No. Do you wanna go?
Sorry.
James Piso, two seventy-three, Questwood Drive. I just wanted to thank the mayor and town council and the school, Mr. Falco, for this wonderful event. I know it's a lot of preparation, and I'm so glad that you guys could come together and do this. It's a great opportunity for the kids, and I just wanted to say how wonderful it was, and I'm so proud of all you.
Seeing no more comments, I will close public comment. I'm going to ask that Mayor Steber take over and request the con- council confirm your actions taken at this meeting by passage of Resolution eighteen through one fifty-one.
Thank you, Mayor Pitzcavage. Uh, at this time, I will ask, uh, our borough clerk to please read Resolution eighteen dash one fifty-one by title, please.
Resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown approving the actions taken by suited representatives during the May thirteenth, twenty nineteen Youth and Government Council Meeting.
Okay, you've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
That this resolution be adopted?
Seconded.
I have a motion by Councilman Revolinsky, seconded by Council President Dixon, that the resolution is adopted. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Curver?
Aye.
Councilman Legati is absent. Councilwoman Mayor is absent. Councilman Revolinsky?
Aye.
Mayor, we have four ayes.
So moved. At this time, I will return the meeting back over to Mayor Pitzcavage.
Next we have council comment. Does council have any comments? Seeing no further comments, I will close council comments. Next we have mayor comment. Does the mayor have any comments?
Well, Mayor, do you have any comments? Is anything you'd like to say to your fellow students, or to the, uh, folks in the audience, or the folks at home?
Well, I mean, thus, good job. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Uh, I do have a, a few brief comments. Uh, first, I would like to remind the student participants, please do not leave after the meeting. We'd like to get yous all up front. We're gonna get behind the town seal and, uh, have a photo op for, uh, Channel fifteen, the website, and also the parents. Uh, also, too, um, I'd like to thank Mr. Falco for, uh, making sure that this, um, event continued on in the Milltown school system. We still don't know exactly when it started. I'm guessing somewhere around nineteen sixty with the New Jersey Tricentenary Celebration. Uh, this is something that's been going on and on, uh, back when I was a kid. In Joyce Kilmer School, I was the superintendent of recreation, and I actually helped them, uh, come up with the plans to build a new basketball court at Albert Avenue Park where I lived down there and played basketball. So, um, it was really a nice thing. It was a great way to see how our local government works, and I just pray that Joyce Kilmer School will continue this tradition. Uh, I think it's so worthwhile, uh, to, to get these students to have a taste and participate in our, in our wonderful community, so thank you again. Also, thanks to our clerk, Gabriella Saboni, for her spending the day and preparing all of this that you are seeing and hearing tonight. So please, a round of applause for our two wonderful candidates. And, um, at this time, uh, we're gonna make some, uh, s- some, uh, presentations, uh, certificates of recognition for each one of the participants. Now, I don't wanna do this just en masse, so the kids get their certificates and it's done. What we're gonna do is we're gonna take each one with their, uh, professional rep or their councilperson, so there's an opportunity, if someone would like to take a picture. Russ, if you'd like to get some pictures of, uh, everybody receiving their diploma, I mean, their certificate. So we'll handle one at a time, and I'll call them, uh, in the following order. First, we're gonna start with our business administrator, uh, Gerald Reeves, who is, uh, representing Jeanette Larison this evening. So Russ, if you'd like to come up and, uh, take a photograph, or if there's any parents here, uh, of you.
You have to seat to the middle when you want.
You know what? Why don't you come on up front? That would be nice.
Just out of the way, get the, I can take this away right now, nobody's talking.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, uh, next we have Ava Hellerich, who is, uh, representing our borough clerk, Gabriella Saboni. Okay, next, we have representing our, uh, we have Charlie Johnson, representing borough attorney, John Bruder Esquire. And next we have Julian Counterman, who is representing our borough engineer, Michael McClelland. Okay, now for mayor and council, we'll start with Stephanie Yarnell, representing, uh, Next we have Emily Yatsko, who is representing Utilities Chairperson, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Trina Mayer, who is not with us this evening, so in her stead, we will have Councilman Randy Farkas. Okay, next we have Lainey Dwyer, representing Public Safety Council Chairperson, Nicholas Legati, and who are we having, uh, Councilman Legati is not with us this evening? Next we have Amanda Sullivan, who's representing Public Works and Recycling Chairperson, uh, Next we have Nina Plouche, who is representing, uh, Environmental Health and Social Services Next we have Cynthia Rosinski, who is representing Finance Administration and Planning Councilperson, uh, pardon me, Council President Ron Dixon. And finally, we have Patrick Pitzcavage, who is representing myself, Mayor Steber.
I'd just like to also mention that earlier this evening, I have given Patrick a nice pin that he says is mine, is, uh, from the New Jersey League of Municipalities Mayorpin, and, uh, I, little keepsake that I hope he, uh, will cherish for a long, long time. Uh, I know I'm wearing a proud, serious pin, and I hope he, he shares it with him. Patrick, congratulations, and thank you so much for your job well done, Steve. Thank you.
Before we get wrapped up, I'd just like to say, please let's give these wonderful students another round of applause. Okay, uh, with that being all said, it's time for me to shut up. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Mayor Pitzcavage. Take it away, Mayor.
All the scheduled matters have been completed for tonight. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Yarnell, and a second by Councilwoman Rosinski. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council President Rosinski?
Aye.
Councilwoman Plouche?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yatsko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yarnell?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Don't forget the hammer.
One sec. You're gonna take like a two minute. Two minutes. No, just get up, everybody get up, let's go. Give everyone a minute. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Quick move, stop. Okay, so let's get this arranged. Anybody this height and lower, get in the front. All right, so, just make sure you pass your. Old small guys get in the back. Yeah, you guys stay in the back. Okay, each three in the front, and each four, you stay in the back.